Test in one, two, three. Good evening everyone and welcome to the 2018 Florida Department of Transportation five-year work program public hearing Facebook livestream. I'm Rodolfo Roman, the Community Outreach Specialist for District Six. Now this is an opportunity for you to learn about proposed projects that will be funded and carried out in District Six during the next five years. You can view tonight's meeting materials by visiting www.fdotmiamidate.com/work-program-public-hearings. Stay tuned for the work program presentation portion of this public hearing at 6:45 PM. You can provide your comments on your comment box below right here on the Facebook livestream, which will be shared with attendees if time permits. Now this is an opportunity for you to formally present your comments, opinions, and ideas about the projects for the record. You can send us your comments via email at wpcomments@dotstate dot fl dot us. When providing a comment, please provide your full name. You can mail your comment as well to the District Six Communications Office at 1,000 Northwest 111th Avenue, Room 6134 in Miami, Florida, 33172, or you can call us anytime at 305-470-5349. Now remember to like us on Facebook at MyFDOTMiami or follow us on Twitter at MyFDOT underscore Miami. You can visit our website for any information on projects, that's fdotmiamidate.com, to learn more about upcoming and ongoing projects. Now you may use hashtag D6WP tonight during the livestream here and we're going to go ahead and share that here on our social media. Now at this time, we'll address our Spanish and Creole speaking participants. Spanish and Haitian Creole translators are available upon request. We're going to start off real quickly with our Creole translator to introduce you guys to the 2018 five-year work program. Gertie St. Louis?
Bonsoir, bienvenue dans 2018, Département de Transport Florida, Réunion Publique pour cinquante années de travail nous sur Facebook Live. Non moi c'est Gertie St. Louis et puis ma val tradit pour nous assoir, mais c'est un spécialiste en informations pour communauté pour District Six. Réunion ça c'est opportunité pour nous apprendre sur projet yo proposer et ça y val fini c'est bati na cinquante année yo cap vini. Si nous gaien question de ne pas bay yo a parler de assoir, s'il vous plaît visitez Avoue ça, na val fe en presentation, so nous mande nous pour ete la sur Facebook Live. Presentation sa, commencer à six et quinze. So gaien question de ne pas bay yo mande na presentation, s'il vous plaît mette question en banne boite comment qui ou e en banne. So va ble mette question la ou ka voelin na wpcomments@fdotmiamidate.com. Assoir ou ka voelin sou la ponce na 101000 Northwest 111e Avenue, Miami, Florida, 3317D. Assoir omme gai le luna 305, 470, 53, 39. Encore nous mande nous pour ete la, vous gai sa, apre presentation, na val mande, na partagez question amon yo ki la assoir. Si nous gaien ne pas question, mande nous, apou sa, na val edo. Na val tradit tu bay pou. Merci encore, ete la sur Facebook Live.
Thank you very much, Gertie, for the information and for those watching us of Creole speaking. And now we're going to speak to those folks in Spanish. Now buena tardes, bienvenidos a nuestro programa de trabajo de cinco años del Departamento de Transportación de Florida 2018, a través de este medio de comunicación. Soy Rodolfo Roman, el especialista de alcance comunitario en el Distrito Seis. Esta es una oportunidad de aprender de nuestros proyectos tentativos que serán financiados y llevados por el Distrito Seis en los próximos cinco años. Usted puede leer más información visitando nuestra página web www.fdotmiamidate.com, línea work, W O R K, línea program, P R O G R A M, línea public, P O P U B L I C, línea hearings, H E A R I N G S. Este est en sintonía para una presentación comenzando alrededor de las 6:45 PM. Usted puede escribir sus comentarios a través de las redes sociales. Los comentarios serán leídos si el tiempo permite. Esta es una oportunidad para presentar sus comentarios, opiniones, e ideas de nuestros proyectos para nuestro archivo. Usted puede proporcionar su comentario o mandar preguntas a través de correo electrónico al correo siguiente wpcommentss@dotstate dot fl dot us. Puede mandar sus comentarios a través de el correo postal a la oficina de comunicaciones a la dirección 1,000 Northwest 111 Avenida, el cuarto 6134, Miami, Florida, 33172. También puede llamar al 305 470 53 49. Y también puede ustedes participar esta noche a través de en vivo, a través de Facebook. Sigue a nosotros a través de las redes sociales, en nuestra página Facebook donde nos están viendo nosotros, MyFDOT Miami, y por Twitter, MyFDOT línea Miami. Puede visitar nuestra página web donde estamos, tenemos más información sobre este evento, sfdotmiamidate.com, línea W O R K, línea program, línea public hearings, para aprender más de nuestros proyectos. Esta noche puede usar también la la d6wp a través de las redes sociales, ok? Entonces muchas gracias por sintonizar, ahora vamos a hablar a las personas en inglés. Throughout the night, we will be interviewing several Florida Department of Transportation project engineers and staff who will be informing us of upcoming and ongoing roadway improvement projects. As you can see, we have several informational tables featuring projects in Miami-Dade County. Project staff is here to question to the public about the district's projects. I'm going to step away for a few seconds. You can see the crowd behind me. They're lining up to get information about all of the several projects that we have available here tonight. Some of the projects that we have information available is the Golden Glades Interchange, Okichobee Road Projects, the I-395 State Road 836-I-95 in Miami Beach. We have the Alton Road from 43rd Street to Allison, and also the projects along Chrome Avenue, and many, many more. Now other governmental organizations are also on board and are here with us tonight, including the Miami-Dade Transportation Planning Organization, the Miami-Dade Express Authority, and Florida's Turnpike Enterprise. Again, make sure to use the hashtag D6WP throughout the night. Now to get things going, we're going to welcome our District Six Secretary, Mr. Jim Wolfe. Secretary, thank you very much for joining us. You've had a wonderful night here today. It's an opportunity, of course, for the community to find out about the great ongoing projects that we have. Now I have a quick question for you, Secretary. Now how does this evening's event into the fit into the department's mission to provide a safe transportation system that moves people and goods, enhances economic activity, and preserves the environment and communities?
This public hearing is an opportunity for the public to learn more about our transportation projects, what we're planning. It's an opportunity to give us some feedback as well. We know how important the decisions FDOT and our partners make about transportation are for safety, are for mobility, for quality of life here in Miami-Dade. So this is an opportunity for the public to be involved.
Thank you very much for sharing the information, Mr. Secretary. I understand we have a packed house here and a lot of information available for all the folks watching us on Facebook Live and of course those in attendance. Secretary, thank you.
It's great to see this level of interest and I particularly like having Facebook involved.
Thank you, thank you so much, Secretary. Thank you, I know you're a busy man today. Okay, we're going to now go ahead and bring on some other individuals who are going to enjoy us. In just a few minutes, we're going to bring in Ms. Antonette Adams, the Work Program Administrator, who will give us the whole details about what this event is all about. Once again, we're here at the Hilton, right down the street of Dauphin Mall, which is not too far from the FDOT District Six office. We're located nearby where you can find out more information. We're here all the way until 8:00 PM, so you can make your way over and find out information about all of the projects that we have available. And now we are going to speak to Ms. Antonette Adams, our Work Program Administrator. Ms. Antonette, thank you so very much for joining us out here in our Facebook livestream. So we have a few questions for here to hear. Of course, we had a packed house. Everybody want to know about all of our upcoming projects. Now Antonette, what is the work program development process?
Well, the development process actually begins in the summer. That's when we take an opportunity to meet with most of the elected officials to determine, you know, to explain to them what we were able to accomplish for them last year and also get their needs for this particular year. We also have an opportunity to update our cost estimates in-house, after which we balance the work program, and then we have what we're having right now, a public hearing to present the work program to the public and everyone that, you know, could have, that was attending this meeting. Afterwards, what happens is Central Office of Tallahassee, they compile all of the work programs statewide, and they present it to the legislature, the governor's office, and all of the various committees in Tallahassee, after which they get voted on, the budget gets approved, and the secretary, state secretary adopts the work program, and we start this process all over again.
Ms. Antonette, how does this tentative work program compare to last year's?
Well, I'm excited to say that we did get a little bit of an increase in terms of attended work program. The estimates did increase in some cases, however, we were able to accommodate that. Also, I'm excited to say that the FLP, or the Freight, Logistics, and Passage Operations, the transit portion of that increased as well, and excited to say that because last year we were at 70% of our allocations per statute, we have to be at 15. But last year we were 70%, this year we're at 24%, and I attribute that to us continuing to support the TPO's number one priority, which is the SMART Plan.
So what's on the horizon? What can people, what can the community expect?
I think in the future, pretty much this year we're on what we call a regular cycle. Next year, due to legislation and also amended this year, we're going to be on an abbreviated cycle. So that means all of the work that we're doing right now that's taken us about six months is going to take us four, so we're going to get two months cut off. But you know what? For the most part, we will continue to work with our partners and ensure that we have the best work program ever.
Ms. Antonette, thank you for your time. I know you're very busy and got a lot of credit. Thank you very much for your time. It's been for us. So now we're going to go in just a few seconds, we're going to be walking around here and show you just along again. We're on here at the Hilton, near the Dauphin Mall, which is not too far from our district headquarters. We're here available all the way until 8:00 PM, and you can walk over, well not walk over, but you can drive over here unless you live close to the area, and find out information about several of the projects that we have available here tonight. And as I stated earlier, we have many individuals, staff, project engineers onboard here on our Facebook Live that will explain to us a little bit about all of the projects that we have featured here tonight. And now we're going to move forward exactly to talk about one of the upcoming projects, and that's the Golden Glades Interchange Project. We have Public Information Officer, Ms. Sandra Vello. Sandra, thanks so much for your time. You know, let us know a little bit about the Golden Glades Project, or Interchange Project. Now can you provide a brief overview of the Golden Glades Improvement Project and how these projects help local and regional travelers?
Yes, the Golden Glades Interchange Project is being designed, it's at the 60% design of plans right now. It's being designed in conjunction with the Florida's Turnpike Enterprise. It is meant to improve the connectivity between the Palmetto Express, I'm sorry, Palmetto Expressway, I-95, as well as State Road 9 and State Road 7. It's meant to improve the connectivity regionally and locally, for, it's meant to also enhance the safety and mobility for riders that are using the facilities day in and day out. And we are looking to, you know, really improve the interchange as a whole.
So Sandra, what can, and for those watching on Facebook Live, you know, when can we anticipate? What is the tentative schedule that we have right now?
We're looking at September of 2021 to start construction and about five years, you know, from the time that we start to complete the project.
Sandra, thanks very much. I know you're busy yourself, and again, you can come down here to the Hilton and check out the 2018 work program, where Sandra will be onboard here to give you information about the Golden Glades Interchange Project. Thanks Sandra for your time. Okay, I'm going to step away real quickly here to just show you a little bit of the backdrop, the action taking place here at the Hilton. Again, we're here all the way until 8:00 PM. Now you can start providing your comments on our comment box, and again, if time permits, we will be able to get to it during our presentation portion, which will start at 6:45 PM. So we're getting about 12 minutes or so, or 17 minutes, we go, before we get started with our presentation. Now I'd like to feed, we're going to give you some information about some of our priorities here at the department. Now some of our top priorities include, of course, safety and the preservation of the state highway system or existing roads. Some more information about our district that I'd like to share with those watching us on Facebook Live. The department also prioritizes capacity improvements and other projects such as landscaping, intelligent transportation systems, and service patrols. The department coordinates directly with federal and local governments, including transportation planning organizations, county commissions, and municipalities. Transits, airports, seat ports, rail, bicycle, and pedestrian travel programs also receive state and federal transportation funds. Now here at District Six, we cover Monroe and Miami-Dade County, which is home to more than 2.6 million residents who travel more than 56 million vehicle miles per day. The state road system includes 700 miles of roadway, which when all lanes are considered, equals close to 3,000 lane miles. Now our residents are served by seven public airports, 78 private airports, two rail lines, two deep water ports, and three fixed guideway systems, which include the Tri-Rail, Metro-Rail, and Metro-Mover. Now in just a short time, we will be speaking to some of these folks that will explain to us about the projects that are ongoing right now, including Mr. Raul Quintanilla, who'll be talking to us about the expressway. In just a few seconds, we're going to welcome him here to talk about that project, which of course many of our fans here of our Facebook Live followers would like to know about. So let's bring in Mr. Raul, who'll explain to us a little bit about the Palmetto Expressway. Right, Raul, thanks so very much for your time. I know it's a packed house here, very busy. So Raul, can you just basically explain to us a little bit about the Palmetto Expressway, Express East-West Project, which is currently in design?
Well, basically, Palmetto East-West Project consists of the total reconstruction of Palmetto Expressways and the adjacent fronted roads from I-75 to Northwest 17th Avenue. Basically, we're going to be providing express lanes on both directions. We're going to be improving the drainage, the lighting, the connectivity between, for different modes of transportation like bicycles, pedestrians, we're providing new sidewalks. We, we're also going to be providing auxiliary lanes on Palmetto, so that that will improve some congestion on Palmetto. So that's, that's basically the scope of the project.
We understand that Palmetto Expressway is very lengthy, so how many segments does it include?
Okay, accordingly, we have six design segments. They're all at 60% design stage. Now, when we go to construction, we're going to have different construction sequence. We're going to have three construction segments, which are going to be segments one and two, they're going to be strong for construction in year 2022. Then we're going to have segments three, four, and five, strong for construction in year 2024. And the last one, segment six, will be strong with the ultimate express lane connection to and from I-95. So that's going to be in 2027.
So such an important project, this is, you know, how is it going to benefit the community?
Well, benefits are, there are substantial benefits, including the connection, the east-west connection to the express lane system that is currently on the construction to the south, and that's going to provide the connection from I-75 to Golden Glades. We're also providing lighting, new lighting, new drainage, sidewalks, new sidewalks. Palmetto Expressway is an evacuation route, so all these improvements and new, the new system that we're building there would improve in case of evacuation, would serve for that purpose too. Express lane, the lighting, so I think that's, that's mostly in general terms of what...
Pretty much covered all the bases. Well, I know you're very busy out here. Again, we have a lot of folks that are going to your table, so thank you for your time and explaining to us a little bit about the Palmetto Express Program Project. Thank you very much, Raul. Thank you, thank you. Step out of here, again, just a, just a few, at around 6:45 PM, we will start the presentation portion, so we still have some time. Still have some time till we get things going. Now, I'd like to mention that again, you can provide your comments by writing it on the comment box. I see some of you guys are already providing it there, which is great. So we encourage you that you share some of your information here on Facebook, and again, if time permits, we will be able to answer those questions here accordingly. In just a few seconds, again, we are going to bring some more staff members that are going to speak to us about many, many projects. And now we're going to welcome Mr. Oscar Gonzalez, if you could just give me two seconds here, as we're, we're trying to get everything here, we're live on Facebook Live, so if you could just bear with us here, we're going to welcome, in just a few seconds, Oscar Gonzalez to tell us about the I-395 project, which of course is a very important one, just like many others here at the District Six that we're currently working on. Again, make sure to share all your comments below during this feed. Now one second here. Again, make sure you use a hashtag D6WP, as we will be answering your questions if In just a few seconds, we're going to welcome Mr. Oscar Gonzalez to talk about the I-395 project, just a few times. Again, make sure you use the hashtag D6WP, as we continue on here with our Facebook Live, in just a few seconds. If you have any information, you can call us at 305-470-5349. So we're going to have Mr. Oscar Gonzalez here, PIO, for the I-395. Can you tell us, just explain to us a little bit about the I-395?
Well, it's actually three projects in one. It's the I-395, SR-836, I-95 Design-Build Project. So we're going to do a little work on all those three expressways. On SR-836, we're actually going to double-deck 836 from 17th Avenue all the way to the Midtown Interchanges, which is where 395, I-95, and 836 come together. And then on I-95, we're going to replace the concrete pavement from Northwest 8th Street to Northwest 29th Street. And then on I-395, we're going to completely reconstruct I-395, including the construction of a new signature bridge that's going to actually span over Northwest 2nd Avenue and Biscayne Boulevard. In addition to that, we're going to raise the profile of the expressway. Right now, if anyone's driven in that area, you know, the elevation of the expressway is low compared to the road below. It's dark underneath the expressway, there's a lot of clutter of columns, so we're going to build it a little bit higher, allow more light to come through, we're going to lessen the amount of columns, and we're actually going to build a trail, communal spaces underneath the bridge that will connect Northwest 3rd Avenue to Biscayne Boulevard.
And I'd like to saw our Facebook viewers, and I know some of that information is available on our website that they can visit on fdotmiamidate.com, so I'd like to invite you there. So what is the tentative schedule? What are we looking at here, Oscar?
Well, actually, yeah, in terms of the website, the project has, also has its own website, i-395miami.com. And I would encourage everyone to go onto that site, and we have all the information that we have on the fact sheet plus additional information regarding the project and the three phases of the project. But more importantly, people can go to the i-395miami.com website and sign up for alerts. So once construction starts, every Friday, they'll be getting an update as to what they should expect the following week in terms of activity, possible lane closures, and work that will be going on.
So information like the one you have right here in your hand, they could just download this, the PDF?
They could download, they could download the PDF. We have many renderings, we have the project location map as well, information. We actually have a office, a public information office in the overtown area that's open Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. People can stop by, and we're going to be in the area, we're going to be working with the residents, commuters, businesses, as well as those that are on, within all the limits of all the three projects.
So what is the tentative schedule that we have so far?
Well, right now, we're, it's a design-build project. So right now, the contractor is working on finalizing the design, the actual design plans that will move into construction. So we're doing work like surveying, we'll be doing some geotechnical explorations all along the three corridors. And so we expect major construction to start in February and March of next year. You may see some work in the local roads as early as January, and like I said, the geotechnical exploration and surveying and other things like that are ongoing right now.
Wonderful, Oscar. And again, that website again, so those watching us on Facebook Live can jot it down?
i-395miami.com.
Oscar, thank you very much for all that information about those three wonderful projects that we have ongoing here. And again, you can come down here to the Hilton, which is not too far from the district headquarters, and again, it's just literally half a mile from the District Six. And the address, we'll give it to you in just a few seconds here, 167, no, 16, I'm trying to get it here, we'll give it to you right now, in just a few seconds, as we're going to welcome more staff and project engineers to talk to them about the upcoming projects that we have. Just a few seconds, again, we'll get started with the presentation in about six minutes, actually. So the address is 1695 Northwest 111th Avenue, and that's at the Hilton, we're located. It's literally just right across the street from the Dauphin Mall, it's right across the street, and 0.5 miles away from the District Six headquarter. Okay, in just a few seconds, we're going to welcome in now Ms. Karina Fuentes, the Design Roadway Engineer. She's going to give us a little breakdown before we kick into gear into our presentation. Okay, so Ms. Karina Fuentes, the Design Roadway Engineer. How are you, Karina? We've worked on many projects here, and of course, we're all excited to know about, you know, what goes on behind the scenes. Of course, we're trying to find that out right here, as we have a packed house in the Hilton. But Karina, you know, can you please explain to us a little bit about the design phase and where it falls in our project development?
Sure, thank you, Rodolfo. The design phase is, can vary between 12 months and sometimes more than 24 months, depending on the type of project. And during that phase, we do a lot of extensive coordination with the public, as well as internal staff, to make sure that our plans go out the way they're supposed to. We get plenty of reviews and some middles, and we get comments from everyone, and we make sure we implement them in our plans. After that, the plans are finalized, we get a lot of certifications. Make a long story short, the project goes out for bidding, where contractors can openly and competitively bid on our projects.
So Karina, when do the community stakeholders have an opportunity to give their input? Is it in this stage, the design phase?
They have an opportunity during design, during our design workshops. We have workshops to tweak our design based on stakeholders' inputs and comments, as well as in these events, and they can always contact our Public Information Office and their government entities and local community.
And now, of course, there is a transition from the design phase, where you guys come up with a concept, we get all the information from the community, but then it goes on to the construction. Can you just break it down just a little bit, how that works?
We wrap up the projects based on all the inputs from the stakeholders and internal staff, and we finalize the plans. The, like I mentioned earlier, the plans do go out for bid, open and competitive bidding, and where the contractors can bid on a final set of plans.
Well, Karina, I know you're very busy, and we're about to get started with the presentation. Thank you very much for explaining that to us. Thank you very much, Karina. Okay, so in just a few seconds, we're going to, we're going to go, in just a few seconds, a few minutes, I think, we're going to start the presentation. So we'll get with more staff later on, as we're going to kick into gear our presentation portion at 6:45 PM. So we'll get orchestrated here as far. And again, during the presentation... And again, during the presentation phase, just a reminder, you could participate. We encourage you to share your thoughts, your comments. You can write it on our Facebook comment box right below. So please do so as we encourage you as we're going to now start the presentation phase. One second here. So again, please go ahead, submit your comments as we're about to start our presentation portion here on presentation. Thank you very much, and we'll be right back with more of interviews after the presentation portion. Thank you very much.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much for coming tonight to our five-year tentative work program public hearing. My name is Tish Berger. I'm the Public Information Officer for District Six. I'd like to introduce our District Six Secretary, James Wolfe, who's going to open with a few words.
Really appreciate you all showing up. I recognize a lot of you, DOT employees, a lot of transportation professionals. I see some people here that I don't know, and I really, you know, the VIPs here are the public, the members of the public that spent a couple of hours in our evening devoted to transportation. And I'm sure that's because you care about something, safety, mobility, bicycles. And we all know that transportation affects our daily lives, all of us. The decisions that we make, FDOT and our partners, in taking our limited resources, applying them to projects, and developing our five-year work program are vital to everybody in Miami-Dade. It has a lot to do with our quality of life, our economic prosperity. Every year, we develop a five-year work program by developing one new year, advancing the other four years, and proceeding with projects in an orderly manner. We coordinate with a lot of other agencies. You'll hear about that, particularly the Transportation Planning Organization in developing our priorities. But the public's interest is key to what makes our program run. Are we dealing with those issues that are important to you? This public hearing is an opportunity to inform you and also to receive some feedback. I'd also like to say hello to the Facebook Live people that are on. I'll be interested to see the numbers. They're climbing every year, and we get a lot more participation from the public through Facebook Live. So without that, I hope you've had an opportunity to talk to people around the tables here. For instance, we got the Golden Glades. If you're trying to figure out the Golden Glades project, good luck. But we have people you can ask right there. But et cetera, some of our other key projects are around the tables in the room. And if you haven't already, I hope you take an opportunity to talk to our project people to get us the best way to get the information. With that, let's move on.
Thank you, Jim, and good evening, everyone. My name is Antonette Adams, and I am going to be presenting to you this evening the draft tentative work program for fiscal year 1920 through 2023. I would also like to welcome those who are joining us via Facebook Live and also on webinar. We thank you again for your participation. We appreciate you taking the time to be with us on this afternoon, especially for the venue change and what a nice venue it is, right? I would like to recognize any elected official. I don't think there's any elected officials. Nope, we don't have any. So we will just get started, okay? Okay, so the Florida Department of Transportation's mission is to provide a safe transportation system that ensures the mobility of people and goods, enhances economic prosperity, and preserves the quality of our environment and communities. The department's top priority remains safety and preservation on the state highway system. The department also prioritizes capacity improvements and other projects such as fragility, intelligent transportation systems, projects, and landscaping. We coordinate directly with the federal and local governments, including the Transportation Planning Organization, county commissions, and various municipalities. Transit, airport, seaport, rail, bicycle, and pedestrian travel programs also receive state and federal funds. District Six covers both Miami-Dade and Monroe Counties, which is home to approximately 2.6 million residents who travel more than 34 million vehicle miles per day. The state road system includes 700 miles of roadway, when which all lanes are considered, the total is in excess of 3,000 lane miles. Our residents are served by seven public airports, 78 private airports, two rail lines, two deep water ports, and three fixed guideway systems, including Tri-Rail, Metro-Rail, and Metro-Mover. So now, let's talk about the various funding sources that the department uses to accomplish its work plan. The adopted budget for District Six's five-year work program is over $3.7 billion. Fifty-eight percent of that funding comes from state sources, and 32% of that funding comes from federal sources. The remaining balance is from toll revenue, right-of-way, and state infrastructure bank bonds, local contributions from other entities as well. The department's work program allocates funding to the following categories. 73% towards product, which includes construction, freight logistics, passenger operations, and right-of-way purchase. 13% goes to product, which is your support phases, product support, I'm sorry, which is environmental, PE, right-of-way support, and your CEI phases. 14% to operation and maintenance, and there is $2 million that goes to fixed capital outlet, which is for our building and grounds. FDOT District Six program is allocating $2.7 billion towards the product category. If we further dissect this category, we see that 66% of the district's product consists of construction improvements. 24% of the product is dedicated to freight logistics and passenger operation, which exceeds the statutory 15%. The remaining product is allocated towards right-of-way and other product, which includes our small county, SCOP and SICP, which is a county incentive grant program and a small county operation program. Another look at the $1.7 billion construction category reveals 69% is allocated towards capacity improvements, 10% allocated towards the public-private partnership reimbursement to the concessionaire, and that's for the tunnel. That was a 30-year payout, and I believe we just completed the fourth year of that payout. The remaining budget is allocated towards roadway resurfacing, bridge repair, and safety improvements. Of the $652 million allocated towards the freight logistics and passenger operation funding, FDOT is investing $311 million towards transit improvements. The remaining budget is distributed amongst the modes of public transportation, which includes aviation, rail, seaport, and intermodal. The district's work program is a tentative list of projects that will be funded and carry out in District Six during the next five years. It is the department's anticipated work plan in Miami-Dade and Monroe Counties, and it is developed annually. As projects are identified, schedules are developed based on our priorities. Each year, the adopted or current year projects are completed, and a new fifth year is then added. Now we want to talk about the work program cycle. So in this year, even though the slide says we start in June, we actually start this process a little bit earlier than that, sometimes in between March and May, because one of the things that we actually do is we run reports in our district, and we actually start what we call our meetings. We meet with project managers. We actually ensure that they update all of their cost estimates, whether it be construction estimates, right-of-way estimates, all phases associated with the project to ensure that we have the most up-to-date information in the system as it relates to the projects. And between the months of June and October, what we typically do is that we have interaction with our county officials. We typically meet with the county officials and the TPO staff to convey to them the adopted work program or what we were able to accomplish during the previous tentative work program cycle, and also to get their needs for the next work program cycle. In November, we do what we're doing tonight. We have our public hearings so we can convey to the public and anyone that needs to know the tentative work program and what we're able to accomplish during this time period. In December, what typically happens is the Miami-Dade County TPO and the Monroe County Commission, we meet with them to present the tentative work program and also to get their concurrence of the work program as well. In January, the FDOT staff in Tallahassee compiles all the district's work program into one statewide work program. And in February, the central office compiles that and submits that tentative work program to the governor's office, the legislature, the Florida Transportation Commission, and the Department of Economic Opportunity. In March, the Florida Transportation Commission holds a statewide public hearing to receive comments or input for the tentative work program. And then the following day is when the legislature convenes. In July, after the legislature has approved the department's work program, the Secretary of Transportation adopts the work program, and we start the cycle all over again. Okay, so District Six has several major projects underway and planned over the next five years in Miami-Dade County, and I'd like to give you just a brief update of those projects. There's no slide for this. The very first one is the I-395 State Road 836, I-95 Design Build Project. In mid-July, the Florida Property Transportation District Six and its partner, Miami-Dade Expressway Authority, gave Archer Western, the Moya Joint Venture notice to proceed to begin design work on the Design Build Project. The project includes reconstruction of the three busiest aforementioned expressways in Miami-Dade County, as well as a signature bridge that will span over 1,000 feet over Northeast Second Avenue and Biscayne Boulevard, thus redefining the Miami skyline. The project cost is $802 million with a contract period of approximately four years. The next project is Palmetto Expressway/ I-75 Managed Lanes Network. This project consists of implementation of tolls expressed along the State Road 826 Palmetto Expressway from West Flagler Street to Northwest 154th Street and along I-75 from the Palmetto to Northwest 170th Street in Miami-Dade County. The project is approximately 13 miles in length and will provide continuity to the recently opened I-75 express lanes by District Four from Northwest 70th, 170th Street in Miami-Dade County to the I-595 in Brown County. Construction for this corridor is currently underway, and the anticipated completion is in January 2019. The next phase of the Palmetto Express lanes will consist of implementing toll express lanes along an eight-mile stretch of the Palmetto from I-75 to Northwest 17th Avenue, thus improving the system's connectivity as well. Design and right-of-way are currently underway for the two sections from I-75 to the Sea Eight Canal and from the Sea Eight Canal to 67th Avenue. Construction for both are scheduled to let in fiscal year 2022 at a cost of about $272 million. Design for the next three segments, which are from 67th Avenue to 57th Avenue, 57th Avenue to 42nd Avenue, and 42nd Avenue to 32nd Avenue, are underway. Right-of-way will begin in fiscal year 2021. Construction is scheduled to let in fiscal year 2025 at a cost of construction cost of approximately $220 million. Design for the last segment, which is from 32nd Avenue to 17th Avenue, is underway. Construction for that project, however, is out in the later year, which is fiscal year 2028 at a cost of $120 million. The next project is the Chrome Avenue Reconstruction and Widening. The overall Chrome Avenue improvement spanned from Southwest 296th Street to State Road 25th or Okeechobee Road. The need for improvement on this quarter is based on safety as well as physical and functional deficiencies in addition to overall capacity needs. The types of improvements included include the reconstruction and widening of Chrome Avenue, providing a new drainage system, lighting along the length of the corridor, installing guardrail in the median, and providing adequate access management and overall traffic operations through the corridor. The construction has been divided into several manageable parts. The two segments from 232nd Street to 184th Street and from 184th to 136th actually let last May. Construction is slated to begin this month, and the estimated construction is slated to be completed in February 2020. The next two segments, from 232nd Street to 184th Street and from 184th to 136th, will be let in April 2019 with an estimated construction cost of $41 million. In addition to these reconstruction projects, the department is also developing the design for a truck bypass route south of Southwest 296th Street. The project has been segmented into many manageable parts for construction purposes. The four segmented projects are currently in design, and the anticipated construction dates are let in April and June of 2019. These projects provide a truck bypass route to redirect truck traffic from the Homestead Historic District, enhance truck traffic movement, and address existing problems related to traffic congestion in the city of Homestead. The SMART Plan. The department is studying the implementation of premium transit along three major corridors in Miami-Dade County. State Road 9, also known as 27th Avenue or the North Corridor, State Road 968, Flagler Street, State Road 94, Southwest 88th Street, and Kendall Drive. These three studies are part of the Miami-Dade Transportation Planning Organization's Strategic Miami Area Rapid Transit or SMART Plan. These projects seek to increase corridor transit service, improve mobility, provide transportation options, and enhance multimodal connectivity along the respective corridors. PD and E is underway for all three segments with design program to begin in fiscal year 2020. A recommended alternative for the 27th Avenue corridor has been determined. The department will go before the TPO board on December 6th, seek an endorsement of the recommended alternative for the North Corridor. The department will go before the TPO Board on December sixth, seek an endorsement of the recommended alternative for the North Corridor. Golden Glaze Interchange Multimodal Facility. The department recently awarded a design bill project for the Golden Glaze Multimodal Transportation Facility. The project is located in the southwest quadrant of the Golden Glaze Interchange in Nor- in the northern Miami-Dade County and consists of an FDOT-owned park and ride lot bordered by the South uh South Florida Rail Corridor to the north, State Road Seven to the east, and Northwest One Hundred and Fifty-ninth Street to the south. The construction is slated to be completed in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. In addition to this, a major reconstruction of this area is also slated is also in the works. FDOT, District Six, and the Florida's Turnpike are developing the design for several roadway projects within the Golden Glaze Interchange. The project area includes the GGI, which consists of the following five major facilities. State Road Nine, I-95, the Palmetto Expressway, the Florida Turnpike, State Road Nine, South uh State Road Seven, or Seventh Avenue. The proposed improvements to the Golden Glaze Interchange includes approximately ten miles of roadway and ramps. This project will enhance the regional connectivity to the major interchange, these major interchanges. Designed for all segments except for the Palmetto, which is Seventeenth to um Seventeenth Avenue to I-95, that particular piece is um uh will begin in fiscal year twenty twenty, but the design for the other segments are currently underway. Construction for all segments are slated to be in fiscal year twenty twenty-one, except for the Palmetto portion, which will be led in fiscal year twenty twenty-eight. Construction for all, just the construction alone for these projects are estimated at four hundred and eighty million dollars. Alton Road. These projects consist of the reconstruction of State Road Nine-O-Seven Alton Road from Michigan Avenue to Allison Road. The corridor has been separated into three manageable pieces. The scope of work includes installation of a new drainage system as well as new street lighting, signal mass arm, traffic signals, pavement markings, and landscaping. The design is underway for all three segments. Construction is slated to let in fiscal year twenty twenty-one for Michigan to Forty-third and for um the Forty-eight to Allison segment. Construction for the Forty-third to Forty-eight has been deferred from fiscal year twenty-two to fiscal year twenty-three due to an increase in project costs and a shortage of available funds. Okeechobee Road. The department is performing roadway and safety improvements along State Road Twenty-Five through S-27 Okeechobee Road from the Miami-Dade County line to Seventi-ninth Avenue. The need for improvements result from a combination of safety issues and traffic operational deficiencies. Okeechobee Road serves as a part of the strategic intermodal system and is also identified as a major truck route that is vital to the movement of freight. This facility provides critical access to the town of Medley and important origin and destination for regional freight activity. The scope includes reconstruction and widening of the corridor, new ramps, paved paved frontage roads, meeting openings, ITs along the corridor, sidewalks, and bike lanes. Design for all segments are ongoing with construction scheduled for fiscal. There's also an additional project in um at the Okeechobee Road and Palmetto Expressway Interchange. The scope includes upgrading the interchange at three new ramps to alleviate local traffic. Design just started in this year for that particular project. Right-of-way is scheduled in fiscal year twenty twenty-one and construction is slated for fiscal year twenty twenty-four at a cost of approximately seventy-one million dollars. The TPO incorporates the plans of all transportation agencies operating within the Miami-Dade County into its Transportation Improvement Plan, or TIP, which has a five-year timeline as well. It then prioritizes all of the projects submitted for submitted into the department's federal, state, and local funding. The TIP includes uh transportation plans for all of the following agencies that you see on the slide here, which includes FDOT District Six, the Florida Turnpike, Miami-Dade Public Works, Miami-Dade Transit, Miami-Dade Aviation Department, Miami-Dade Seaport Department, Miami-Dade Expressway Authority, South Florida Regional Transportation Authority, and the Citizens Independent Transportation Trust. We've also included the Monroe County, who is one of our partners as well. And our partners in Monroe County include Monroe County, Key West International Airport, and Marathon Airport. It takes all of our partners working together to ensure we accomplish a successful work program. And for that, I thank you all. So, right now, we'd like to show you a video that further explains the work program and how it's broken out, but how it's developed, actually.
By car, our infrastructure and planning are integral to the state's success, economic growth, and vitality. The state of Florida has recently surpassed New York as the third most populous state in the U.S. with nearly twenty million residents. Even more staggering, Florida has one hundred million visitors coming to the beautiful sunshine state every year and fifty million of these visitors arrive by car. Our infrastructure and planning are integral to the state's success, economic growth, and vitality. Transportation impacts where we live, work, and play. Helping meet the transportation needs of residents and visitors to this great state through stable and long-term planning is the primary responsibility of the Florida Department of Transportation. The Florida Department of Transportation plans, develops, and implements multimodal projects or infrastructure to meet the long-term transportation needs of Florida's residents and visitors through a stable work program. The FDOT consists of seven districts and the Florida Turnpike Enterprise. District One, with a land area of nearly twelve thousand square miles, represents twelve counties in southwestern Florida. Its one point eight million residents contribute to the twenty-one million miles traveled daily on its state highways. District Two is home to more than one point nine million residents. Its eighteen counties cover nearly twelve thousand square miles. Travelers on the state highway system log more than forty-three million miles daily. District Three represents Florida's panhandle. Its one point four million residents are spread over sixteen counties and eleven thousand five hundred square miles. Each day motorists travel more than twenty-six million miles on state roads. Five counties make up District Four's five thousand square miles. With three point six million residents, vehicles in District Four travel more than fifty-two million miles daily. District Five is one of the fastest-growing areas of the state. It covers nine counties, has nearly nine thousand square miles, and is home to nearly four million residents, log more than fifty-five million vehicle miles traveled daily. District Six encompasses Miami-Dade and Monroe Counties in South Florida. The district is home to two point six million people. Its roads are traveled more than thirty-one million miles daily. District Seven, with a land area of nearly three thousand four hundred square miles, represents five counties with almost two point nine million residents in the Tampa Bay area. Drivers in the district travel nearly thirty-four million miles daily. With four hundred and eighty-three miles of beautifully maintained safe toll highways, Florida's turnpike system spans from Miami to Wildwood and includes toll facilities in South Florida, Orlando, and Tampa, as well as Polk County. On average, two point three million motorists use Florida's turnpike each day. Florida's Turnpike Enterprise is responsible for toll operations on all FDOT-owned and operated toll roads and bridges. This represents more than six hundred miles of roadway and approximately eighty percent of all toll facilities in Florida. The existing transportation system within Florida is served by state-owned roadways, bridges, airports, deepwater seaports, rail lines, and transit agencies. FDOT maintains nearly thirteen thousand central lane miles and six thousand seven hundred and eighty-three bridges. Florida is home to one hundred and ten thousand central lane miles of off-system roads and five thousand three hundred and eighty-one off-system bridges, as well as fifteen seaports, one hundred and twenty-nine public-use airports, two space ports with ten launch facilities, and numerous passenger and rail freight partners, including the Sun Rail, which runs from Orlando to DeBary, and the Tri-Rail, which runs from Miami to just north of West Palm Beach. FDOT's yearly transportation budget is more than ten billion dollars and FDOT is only twenty-five percent federally funded. State and local transportation officials are also responsible for looking at areas of congestion and the cause of these reoccurring and non-reoccurring trouble areas and must develop plans and strategies to solve these congestion problems. Plans and goals of each district are carried out in part by each district's five-year work program, the district's transportation plan. This program is developed by working with local governments, other agencies, and the public. The metropolitan planning organizations and local governments help to set transportation priorities for the department. The district funds the highest priority projects using state and federal funds and entering them into the work program. Keeping in mind, there are funding constraints and it may take time to fully fund these projects. This work program contains projects in different phases of production: planning, project development and environment, designing, right-of-way, and construction. Whether a new road or bridge is being built or the department is assisting other transportation agencies, each project goes through the phases of production. The official five-year work program is adopted July first by the Florida State Secretary of Transportation. July first is the first day of the state's fiscal year. The plan is adopted after the public hearings are held and public comments have been accepted. Local governments have endorsed the plan and the Florida Transportation Commission and state legislatures have approved it. The plan also has stability. First, it is financially balanced. FDOT uses state and federal dollars that are forecasted in each fiscal year to fund projects that metropolitan planning organizations and county commissions have prioritized. Second, the plan is also stable because it funds the different phases of production to ensure the projects are moved through the schedule all the way through construction. Some projects are in the middle of the production process, some are just beginning, and some are near the end. As the district develops and updates each year's work program with residents and local governments, it is understood that next July first, the current or first year of the plan will have begun or is complete and will not show as proposed anymore. The new fifth year will be added on. The yearly update produces the tentative new five-year work program. The district works with the public and local governments to set priorities with this new five-year plan. New priorities are populated into the new fifth year. Adjustments in the first three years create stability issues. The work program assures we have a prioritized program of transportation choices that results in a better quality of life for the residents and visitors to this beautiful state.
So, the information that you see on the screen are for if you have any questions later on in the future, you can call this number or you can access an email to provide um us any comment and question, okay? So, right now, what we'd like to do is we'd like to open up the floor for any questions that you may have. Um, anyone online that's joining us via Facebook Live in or webinar, we ask that you submit your questions in the box that's appearing on the screen. For those in person, we ask that you use the microphones that we have located in the aisles if you have questions and or comment, and please limit your questions to no more than three minutes, please. So, with that, we open up the floor. Yes. Yes, thank you. So, with that, we open up to uh questions and again, you can use the mics in the aisle, please.
All right, Jerry, go ahead. Just a minute, Jerry. All right, Jerry. All right, very good. Jerry Goldstein, I live on Miami Beach, Alton Road. Uh, first of all, a thank you. You had someone come along the J-72 carsway and cut back a lot of the trees, the landscaping. It makes it harder for the urban campers to live out there. I'm just wondering, do you know if someone's gonna go back out there, finish with stump grinding and stuff like that?
Um, do we have someone here from our maintenance office that can probably assist with this question?
Apparently not, however, if you send me an email, I'll put that information to you. And if we left stuff, I'm sure we're gonna grind them, but I don't know that until I check.
Well, no, it's great. I like it. Hopefully you don't plant a lot of trees because I like the vista that views. Uh, another question, if I got time. Going over this handout, you have some, let's say, item with a a number on it. Let's say four, 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 one, two, three, two. Is there a way of finding out exactly the details of those numbers? Can I go online and enter something and see?
Okay, so the information that was provided in the booklet is the actual tentative work program that we were able to accomplish this year. In terms of the financial management number that you're referring to, um, we could provide additional information. There is a website also online that you can pull those numbers up and get additional information. But the description should be in your booklet as well as the cost that we have programmed in the outer years.
Description's obeyed. So, I'd like to get more information. And then, as I said, I live on Alton Road, so I'd like to try to get, you mentioned uh the start date on the Michigan to Forty-third Street. And then you mentioned how the Forty-third Street going north was being delayed for something and get better information on that dates the way.
Okay, so uh you have our secretary's information. If you could, please uh send him an email and provide those questions. We will get a response to you and also give you a link that you can um access to look up the projects and get more information on projects that you're requesting.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We do have a question from Facebook Live. One question from Facebook Live, which reads, "You mentioned one sentence regarding the Kendall Corridor. What is the status of announcing the proposed bill for this corridor?" Our director? Carol Desnitz?
America Transportation Development. Have the gentleman already had?
You gotta answer a question?
I can answer, but.
All right.
So, there was a question on the side of the Kendall Parkway. My name's Albert Sosa, I'm the head of MDX. Uh, so uh the Kendall Parkway is currently wrapping up its uh PDNE process at the state level, at the local level, at the local document, um, which involves the environmental planning, environmental assessment relating to the project. So, we will have a recommended work that will be presented to the public uh in December. We're targeting a public hearing date of December thirteenth and we'll be publishing that notice in the coming weeks. Uh, subsequent to that, uh we'll be moving forward to the uh Army Corps Permit Program, which should be going, begin in the early part of next year. And we'll be moving forward to advertise the first portions of that project for design build construction in the middle part of next year. We anticipate that portions of that project will be coming online uh over the next uh three and a half to four years and we'll be working away from work itself. Uh, associated with that project is a large amount of uh of right-of-way that will have to be acquired in the area. That's another driver of the project, that's it. We expect to begin the right-of-way acquisition process here coming uh the fall of that project. Does that answer the question?
I think that's sufficient answers to the question. Thank you, girl. Thank you very much. Any additional questions? Come on, we have a room full of experts here. Let's just check online, is it we have any additional Facebook, Kindle, webinar questions?
Let me check.
In the interim, you'll be thinking of questions for us. While we're waiting, I just want to bring to your attention that this year was actually a, what we call, a regular cycle. We started the tentative work program development in summer, and the work program actually closes the first week in January. However, next year, the cycle will start in the summer as well, but however, it will be in an accelerated schedule, so we'll be two months early with everything. So, just keep in mind, even though we have the public hearing right now in November, more than likely, the public hearing next year will be held maybe late September, early October, but we'll be in an accelerated cycle, and you'll be seeing a fast and furious barrage of activity from the work program. Okay, there are no additional questions online? Okay, no questions?
What's the date of the conference?
Okay, we will have a Monroe Public Hearing that will be held on Friday, and it will start at six thirty.
Six p.m.
Six p.m. as well, and, you know, that is going to be interesting. That will be held in the Marathon Government Center, and that's on this Friday.
Jerry Goldstein, Miami Beach again. I noticed that you're here, you're not at the FDOT building over there, which I understand you had some flooding problems. Well, if you can move the meeting here, you can move the meeting anyway, and instead of having it all the way out west, it would be nice if it was further inland, Twenty-seventh Avenue, Fifty-seventh Avenue, just so like people like me don't have to travel all the way from Miami Beach in this expressway traffic. So, it's just like, now that I've known that, yes, you can move your meetings, you can move them anywhere, and I think it should be further east.
Okay, we will take that under advisement. Yes. We had a bit of a po-hop happen to us a couple of weeks ago, as you mentioned, for those of you who don't know, we had a little bit of flooding in the building. So, typically, we would have this public hearing in our auditorium, but since we had the flooding, the individuals in those particular offices were actually relocated to the auditorium, so we could not have our public hearing in the auditorium as we typically do each year. So, we will take that comment under advisement, but we were able to, you know, secure this beautiful site to have it this year, but trust me, it won't happen next year. Additional questions?
One more question on Facebook. When will the eight thirty-six express lanes be ready for bus service? Eight thirty-six express lane for bus service? MDX?
Yeah, I would say so. There's not express lanes on eight thirty-six per se. What we are constructing is part of the onward wide eight thirty-six from roughly Ninety-seventh Avenue to the east of the way, into Seventeenth Avenue. Are full with inside shoulders, which will be dedicated at peak hours for an express bus service that will be provided by the Miami Express before. It is anticipated that those lanes will be available in the second quarter of next year, and the associated bus service would be running conveniently there.
Thank you very much. That's it. Okay, so, if there aren't any more questions, you can continue to lose the room to talk to individuals that you have, and have an opportunity to talk to. Ask them questions about the project. These products affect you. They affect each and every one of us in this room. So, have an opportunity, this is, you know, our public hearing, it's done to showcase what we were able to accomplish. We really appreciate you being here tonight. Have any questions, you know, we have from the slide. Ask us questions, that's why we're here, okay? And with that, we're done. Thank you. And FYI, Facebook Live, we will continue right to eight.
Yeah, so I've been here for a few years, but I've been really conflicted with this area. I'm lost. I mean, when you started, you were all over. I will provide some information and see what you're doing, and see how they're doing. No, you're right, it's not going to work.
Well, thank you again, ladies and gentlemen, for tuning in to our 2018 Work Program. This now concludes the 2018 Work Program Public Hearing Presentation and Common Portion. However, you can still submit your comments on our Facebook Live, and we will get to you. Just make sure you provide your email information, or you can shoot us an email at wpcomments@dotstatefl.us. Now, here's a reminder that written comments may be mailed, postmarked no more than ten days following the date of this hearing, to be included as part of the public record, or you can send it via email. Once again, that email is wpcomments@dotstatefl.us. When providing a comment, please provide your full name. You can mail your comment to the District Six Communications Office, that's one thousand Northwest, one-eleventh Avenue, room sixty-one thirty-four, Miami, Florida, three-three-one-seventy-two, or you can call us at three oh five, four seventy, fifty-three, forty-nine. Now, we will continue interviewing our project engineers and staff, which are available here at the Hilton, as we proceed with our 2018 Work Program. Now, let's start off with, we're gonna come over now, with Carlos Castro, he is the District Freight Coordinator. Sir Carlos, thanks so much, thank you for joining us. We have a packed house here tonight, great turnout, and of course, for those watching our Facebook Live, again, please provide your comments right on the comment box, and, I mean, we could answer right here, right now, on the spot, which is the beauty of this thing. But Carlos, you oversee freight projects in District Six, so can you tell us about some of the projects you currently are working, explain some of the long-time learn-to-go goals and benefits of these projects?
Oh, sure, sure thing, of all follows. So, I'm the District Freight Administrator for District Six, and I'm gonna preface the answer with, just to try to give you an understanding of what my role is with the department before I actually start getting into those projects. So, I'm actually tasked and appointed by the district to develop and implement strategies that I can improve freight mobility, much in the same manner as we have folks in our district that are looking at transit, looking at capacity projects. My role is to develop and implement those strategies that I can improve freight mobility. And freight, again, it's everywhere where you go, all right? It's got multiple modes of transportation, has rail involved, has our system, our roadway system, it has our seaports and our airports. So, I'm the point person for freight mobility. As far as projects are concerned, I think last year, we talked a little bit about truck parking facilities, or what they call commercial motor vehicle facilities. This year, I wanted to maybe highlight other efforts that the district has, and it's really sub-area freight planning efforts. So, essentially, we're looking, the district is actually looking at high freight activity centers, like the town of Medley, City of Palaca, City of Doral. We looked at the Miami River, and essentially, we have these mini master plans. We study the cities, the municipalities, we partner with those communities, these industrial-based communities, to understand how freight is moving and what can the department do to improve freight mobility. Obviously, we concentrate on our roadway system, the one that we have, you know, that we're responsible for, but we're certainly working with those municipalities, and we're developing, again, some strategies, some recommendations with these freight planning efforts to improve freight mobility. And our roadway system, as I mentioned, some of those recommendations actually are within our purview, our responsibility as a state transportation agency, but at the same time, some of those recommendations actually, you know, the municipalities are the ones that are actually responsible, so we're working together. And that kind of exemplifies the kind of work that we do with the department, that it actually requires some collaboration with municipalities, and I think you heard our transportation secretary talk about multiple modes of transportation, and how important it is. It's not only passenger operations, it's also, you know, our transit components, but at the same time, you know, it has to do with our trucking community, our seaports and containerized cargo, and that's where I come in.
Carlos, we got a question here in Facebook Live from Noel McManus Stillings. So, Carlos, any update about the truck parking project by State Road eight thirty-six?
On eight thirty-six, all right, so we have several efforts that we have undertaken the last couple of years or so to identify truck parking facilities. As it is right now, we had identified a potential facility on the southeast quadrant of State Road eight thirty-six and State Road eight twenty-six, so Palmetto. It's about fifteen acres. We, the department owned that site. We've actually made a recommendation, we assessed the site, it's viable, all right, but it needs a little bit of support from the local community to move it forward. And at the end of the day, you know, the Department of Transportation is an implementation agency. The transportation planning organization, that transportation planning body sets the vision for the county. As an agency, the department executes on that vision. So, but essentially, it has been, the specific project that the gentleman is talking about has been identified, the site has been vetted, it's viable, but it needs some support and vision from the transportation planning organization.
Carlos, I know I've taken some time, you know, you're a very busy person, so thank you very much for sharing all the details, and we look forward to... For more information, you could always go to the website. We got tons of information all the time there.
Yeah, we have a website, our portal, our Staywide Portal, it's freemovesflorida.com. So, that's a good starting point for those that are actually interested in freight mobility. You can certainly find resources at the local level in District Six, but you can also find resources and some of the other efforts that my counterparts have throughout the state. Districts Five in Orlando, District Four just north of us, District One in the, some of the rural areas, Barto area, so that's a pretty good starting point. That's freemovesflorida.com.
Thank you, Carlos, for your time. Thank you very much. I'm gonna step away real quick just to show you, again, paint the picture of everything that's happening here at the 2018 Work Program, and in just a few seconds, we are now going to welcome our landscape engineer, Mr. Kevin Schott, who's gonna give us a little information about the landscaping portion of our District Six here. And again, you can provide your comments at wpcomments@dotstatefl.us. You can also mail your comment to our district headquarters at District Six Communications Office at one thousand Northwest, one-eleventh Avenue, room six-one-three-four, Miami, Florida, three-three-one-seventy-two, or call us at three oh five, four seventy, five-three-four-nine. Now, you still have some time to make it out here, here at the Hilton. Close until eight p.m. We're here until eight p.m. It's only seven-thirty-eight, so if you're nearby and you happen to watch, be watching this livestream on Facebook, you can still make it out here to the Hilton, and once again, that address is sixteen ninety-five Northwest, one-eleventh Avenue, and that's at the Hilton, it's at the Flamingo Ballroom where it's located. So, again, you can still make your way out here, you still got until eight p.m. If not, share your comments on Facebook, and we'll go ahead and see if we can get that answered there, if you have time permits. Okay, so now, we're gonna welcome our district landscape architect, Mr. Kevin Schott. Kevin, thanks so very much for your time, once again, out here on our Facebook feed for the Work Program of 2018. So, Kevin, give us a brief overview of the landscape program and how the department works with local municipalities and landscaping projects.
Okay, well, basically, if you're a designer, or a consultant, or a municipality within District Six, you definitely wanna work with the Department of Transportation, with District Six. It's just, the energy is great, the people are great to work with, we've got a great team, we're making strides. You know, basically, in all-encompassing view, it's, there's just so much that goes on, it's very difficult to nail it down to just one thing, but I'd have to say, in general, the one-point-five percent statute, which is one-point-five percent of the construction dollars is spent on improvements, is what we kind of game towards landscape projects. So, we then, you know, divide that up, prioritizing based on kind of feedback, generally speaking, feedback from the public and information from public officials, or our directors, or the needs of our projects and that sort of thing. And we also, in conjunction with, we include that in conjunction with analyzing, you know, what we see in the field, and what our consultants see in the field. We get a feedback from a lot of people. When it comes to working with municipalities, all of the municipalities down here, and the locals, the county, they're all great to work with, we have great working relationships with them. You know, the key, I think, generally speaking, landscaping is, we take more of a naturalistic approach with the respect to our nature here in South Florida. Some municipalities do want kind of an above and beyond, more very touristic place as well. Some people come for the nature, and some people come for the hotels. In those cases, that they come for the latter, they may be looking for a little bit of, a little bit more something different, you know? Not the naturalistic approach, but it could be something else, like something, for example, more formal, something that might have irrigation, and the key to that really is the MMOAs, which is a Maintenance Memorandum of Agreement, working with the locals. So, I would encourage everyone out there who's listening to be very vocal and involved in your community, and if a DOT road is passing through with the project, contact your local officials, contact your community organizations, and really, if that's what your community desires, is that above and beyond, really go after that maintenance agreement and let them know that, you know, you would like to see the local agency at least have a back-and-forth or even further... at least have a back-and-forth, or even further get involved into an agreement with the FDOT.
Absolutely, and of course, I know we worked on a lot of projects ourselves, and not only we covered Miami-Dade, but Monroe County, but of course, we will be out there on Friday as well, to talk about the landscaping Friday. So again, anything else you wanna share for the folks watching on the Facebook Live?
No, just please be involved, and share the love, and come and see what it's like to work with FDOT.
And any information on landscaping projects, you can visit fdotmiamidade.com. It's on the left side, you click on projects, all that information is available. Kevin, thanks so much for your time, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Alright Kevin, I'll step out real quickly here, just to show you the outlook about our room. As in just a few, we are going to bring in our District 6 Structures Maintenance Engineer. Once again, a reminder that you can provide your comments, it can be mailed, postmarked no more, in 10 days following the date of the hearing to be included as part of the public record. You can send us your comments via email at wpcomments@dot.state FL.us. When providing a comment, please provide your full name. You can mail your comment to District 6 Communications Office at 1,000 Northwest 111th Avenue, Room 6134, Miami, Florida, 33172, or you can call us at 305-470-5349. And again, I invite you to use the hashtag #D6WP throughout the night. Again, we will be on until 8:00 PM, until 9:00 PM. So now, let's welcome in now, Mr. Pablo Roscoe, the District 6 Structures Maintenance. How are you, sir?
Good, good.
Pablo, thanks so much, it's a pleasure to have you here again, once again, this year. So, there are a number of bridges, project in Miami-Dade County, and I understand that your team is responsible for inspecting these and maintaining state bridges throughout the district. Now can you give a brief overview of the bridge inspection processes? How does it go? Take us into it.
Okay, all projects start from something. So ours start from the inspection. So we're responsible to inspect all bridges, including state bridges and local bridges, and also to check their structural capacity as well. So from the bridge inspection, we make a decision on when to repair a bridge, what to repair a bridge, on a bridge, and as well as creating bigger projects, which we call rehabilitation projects. At that point, we made the best decision on what needs to be repaired on the bridge, to preserve it, because we have an investment, we have invested in all these bridges that are costly, and the only thing that we can do is to preserve it, so it lasts longer. Some bridges get to a point that you need replacement. So at that point, we just recommend for replacement, but for the most part, our major part of the work is to preserve those bridges. So we have different contracts, we have contracts for repairs, and then we have the rehabilitation, which goes into a design process, and then goes into construction, like any other project. So our base of our inspection program, or our maintenance program, is on the inspection. And we have certified bridge inspectors, inspectors, as well as engineers looking at the bridges. And every year, like it was said in the bridge, in the worker and workshop today, we go and evaluate all bridges, and then we pick the one that needs work on, to work on, and then we go, some needs repaired because they are minor, and some needs rehabilitations.
So Ra, you just, you go out there and check out all the bridges, inspect them throughout the year to make sure that they're sturdy and what needs, and then you go and pick it out regarding finances, work programs, so forth?
Correct. Well, every bridge has a cycle. So for the most part, the common cycle is 24 months. So at least every 24 months, we go and inspect every bridge in the district. Monroe County and Miami-Dade County as well.
And of course, I know we got some projects down in Monroe County, that we'll be talking about that during the Work Program in Monroe on Friday, but of course, we got a number of them here in Miami-Dade. And you can find that information on our website, fdotmiami.com, miamidade.com. That's where you can find information about the bridge projects. I know we're working on Atlantic Isle, that's in the city of Sunny Isles, and many other projects that you're working on.
Sure, we have projects such as the Brickell Bridge, that we're doing our rehabilitation. We also have projects such as Sunny Isles, the mobile bridges that are there, East and West 79th Street Bridges, those are mobiles as well. Currently, we have the Isma Carters Bosway Project, which we're doing a major rehabilitation as well. Other projects such as, you know, different areas that are being planned right now, such as C1 exiting Key Biscayne. Then we have on I-195, we have completed projects, and we continue to do other projects around there. And the, some small projects like the Sunny Isles, like you just mentioned. Currently, we're doing five, this fiscal year, we're doing five small repair projects for Miami-Dade County. So those are others that are done through our department, and so many others. So every year, we create new projects. As you say, you know, we create six projects, and depending on where the needs are, we place those projects there. So currently, we invest about $11 million on our bridge rehabilitation program, and another million for repairs, regular repairs.
Well Pablo, thank you so very much for your time, I appreciate you letting us know a little bit about the whole bridge inspection and your job, of course. Thank you very much, appreciate it, thank you. Step out real quickly, as we're gonna welcome in just a few, Ms. Baoying. She's your project manager for Okeechobee Road Projects. So Ms. Baoying, how are you? Once again, thank you so much for joining me here on Facebook Live on the 2018 Work Program. Now, Baoying, of course, this year's Work Program includes several related design projects along Okeechobee Road. And what are some of the proposed improvements, and how will they help the commuters?
Absolutely. Well, first of all, the Okeechobee Road is a high-freight community corridor throughout, from within the Miami-Dade County, running east-west and connecting from Broward County. It's a very high truck traffic corridor. Some of the improvement we're looking into is adding acceleration link, deceleration link, weather turnpike. We're also looking into separating some of the movement at grade. At this time, for example, 116-way, we're separating the Okeechobee through movement away from the at-ground movement. We're also providing ramps for 116-way southbound heading to Okeechobee east. Now coming to 87th Avenue, we're looking into grade separation as well, to separate all the movements. Because right now, at the existing condition, all the movement, they meet at one intersection. What we're going to do is to separate a through movement for Okeechobee main line, and we're also separating the 87th Avenue southbound heading to Okeechobee east, so is the 87th Avenue northbound heading to Okeechobee west. So we're kind of separating all this movement in order to provide the traffic signal efficiencies for the at-grade area. Some other improvement we're looking into going for the west is to add additional lane, which is closer to Palmetto area. We have one additional lane for both approaches. We're also providing a better access into 95th Street area. We're widening many of the bridges along Miami Canal. We're also reconstructing some of the bridges along Miami Canal within the project limits. So we're also improving frontage road, we're improving the intersection at Northwest-South River Drive. We adding bike lanes, we also consider sidewalks within the area.
That's a lot of work and a lot of improvements, and I'm sure those watching us on Facebook Live will appreciate it. Thank you, Baoying, for your information, appreciate your time. Thank you, thank you. And now I'm gonna step out just a little bit, we're gonna welcome to just, close off in just a few, we're gonna welcome in George of the Sun Guide in just a few seconds here, again, as we continue with our Work Program 2018. Once again, you can use that hashtag WP, sorry, D6WP throughout the remainder of the night. As again, we're now gonna welcome Mr. George Valance. He's gonna talk to us a little bit about the TSMNO, and Traffic Maintenance Center. Now, TSMNO, you're gonna go ahead and break it down for us, George, exactly what that is, but what is the Traffic System Management and Operation Works? That's basically what it is, TSMNO.
Yeah, so our responsibility is to implement traffic management projects that prioritize the efficiency of the roadway, and also the safety of everyone on the roadway. So our approach is a technology, is an active traffic management approach that combines a whole slew of detectors along the roadway, our traffic management cameras, our road rangers, our incident response vehicles, dynamic messaging signs, all these different strategies combining together at a traffic management center that helps us keep an eye on the road, make sure that everything's working, and adjust to the changing conditions on the roadway.
So what are some of the few services provided by FDOT and the Transportation Management Center?
So one of the key services that we provide is 24-hour/7 roadway monitoring from our Transportation Management Center. That includes our TMC operators, who basically just sit at the TMC, make sure that the roadways are working, make sure that our signs are working, and from there, they can dispatch another of our services, which is the Road Ranger Service Patrol. This is a 24/7 service on District 6 roadways. It is tax-funded roadside assistance for everyone that will handle flat tires all the way to, you know, severe incidents that require special types of clearance from strategies.
I wanna thank you for your time, we're running out of time, but thank you so much for your time, and appreciate you taking us in here at the Work Program. As we're about to conclude the 2018 Work Program, once again, I'd like to mention that you can send your, by email, your comments at wpcomments@dot.state FL.us. So at this point, we would like to thank you for tuning into our Facebook Live for the 2018 Florida Department of Transportation Five-Year Work Program Public Hearing here on Facebook Live. We thank you for contributing with your questions here on our livestream. Now this was an opportunity for you to familiar, to get formalized yourself with one of the information that's taking place here regarding to projects. Now, please note that if you were unable to present your comments, or opinions, or ideas, you can send an email to wpcomments@dot.state FL.us. You can also mail in your comment to Communications Office at 1,000 Northwest 111th Avenue, Room 6134, Miami, Florida, 33172, or you can call us anytime at 305-470-5349. Remember to follow us on social media by liking that Facebook fanpage, the fan page you're on, and @myfdotmiami, or follow us on Twitter, that's @myfdot_miami. You can find tonight's meeting material online by visiting fdotmiamidade.com/work-program-public-hearings, or you can just go to fdotmiamidade.com, and the left tab says Work Program. You can just click there, and you'll be able to download all the information that was displayed here in our 2018 Five-Year Work Program. With that being said, we thank you very much. I've been Rodolfo Roman, your host for the Facebook Livestream. We'll catch you next year. Thanks for tuning in, everyone.